So. Play with things.
And then you're retired, so.
It's now seven P M. I'm going to call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is seven P M. and we are in the municipal meeting room. I will start with a roll call from the far end.
Jamel Torres, contract planner, excuse me.
Marty Kane.
Paul Green.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
I'm Rich Genong, I'm the chairman. And we have approval of the agenda, approval of minutes for November twelfth, November nineteenth, November twenty-third, and December third. We have public comments. We have a public hearing, and then we have old business, a public hearing on thirteen seventy Portland Road, Bruce's Auto. And we will, we will address the issues right afterward. Item number two under old businesses being tabled until January seventh. The applicant is not here, and I'm not, I'm not really sure if his agent understood that he should be here for it. But they're not, so we're going to notify them and we will table this. Until that point. And then, then under other business. Uh, we have to have a vote to, to schedule the public hearing for Bentley's campground. Then we're, then we're all going to go home.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
A second act.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes for November twelfth. I think the more appropriate question is, does anybody have the minutes for November twelfth?
Yes.
Okay. Then you're one up on me.
Do you do copy?
No. I was here. I can vote.
I move that we accept the minutes of the meeting on November twelfth as written.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Marty Kane to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. November nineteenth.
We approve of the minutes as written.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to approve the November nineteenth minutes as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. November twenty-third.
Exactly, it's like.
Oh, that's a sidewalk one?
Yeah.
Okay. Move we approve as written.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. December third.
Those who put in your package tonight, that's from the workshop. All Marty and myself and Rich.
Um, I haven't really taken a look at that. Some of the wording. Probably more important than usual. Could, could we table this till later?
We can table it to June.
We could table.
I'm not using until January.
Till the end of the meeting?
Oh, okay.
To, or January.
Yeah, we can, we can do it again in January.
Is, is there a lot of comments, Tom? Or you haven't?
No.
Okay.
All right.
I just sent them to her last night, so I think she just put them in a pack.
Okay.
Okay, I, I'm fine.
Make it a motion, Tom.
Uh, move we table this till, um, the end of this meeting. We will keep the applicants waiting.
七月十七, I'll second that.
Okay, motion to, by Tom McGinn, seconded by Paul Green. To, uh.
To table?
Table this until the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
January seventh, right?
No.
Oh, just the end of the mission?
Okay, get it done.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Nope, the, 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 the motion was till the end of this meeting.
Oh.
We'll just look at it, so we'll have an extra few minutes.
Any discussion?
Oh.
Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. We'll take, take this up at the end of the meeting. Okay. Public comments. And normally, this is the time when if someone from the public has a comment or something that they would like us to address that is not on the agenda. We would take it up. However, since the only members of the public are, are applicants that are here, we will slide right by that and we will go into the public hearing. It is now seven oh six. I'll call a public hearing for thirteen seventy Portland Road, Bruce's Auto Site Plan Review. The applicant is proposing to expand an existing auto repair facility within the existing structure on the property. The property is located on tax, on assessors Tax Map thirty-four, Lot five A dash one. The owner is Albert Lindsay, and the applicants are Craig and Tabitha Barton. If, if you want, there's, there's no reason because we're going to this, we're going to discuss the application right after.
So the other thing is, is we did get a, uh. A notice from one of the butters, right? That should probably be.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right here?
Yeah. We do have a notice, uh. West side rear exit, the immediate butter to the, a butter to the rear of the property, Paul and Mary Jane Strickland. Of twenty-five Strickland Lane. Concern about the buffer. It is not in the site plan. If not, it should be. Landscape and fencing would be great. The buffer's not in the plan?
Where's the? Nothing.
Natural.
Yeah.
That's for existing, that we have no intention of paying. We're leaving that alone.
I wonder if we just add a note saying to remain, that's if. Uh, undist- undisturbed? Yeah, there is.
All trees.
It's all trees. That. But it's in, I, I haven't talked to him, so I'm not sure what their concern is, but we have had in the past. Uh, properties that had natural vegetation, and then two months later, they clear cut everything. So, uh, you, you're not planning to do that. So if, if there was a note just added to remain un. Untouch. Leave as, yeah. Yeah. So in the back, you can just leave it. I think it will. Yeah.
Perfect. It's said, we have responded to each other's points that he made.
Yeah.
And that was part of our package for tonight. And in that noted, that's a narrative talking about the other person.
Oh, so you, you already. Okay.
And it kind of got, we saw the notice, but we had already done like work anyway, so. Because of the natural power.
So. Just like, I, I didn't see that. I wonder if, if. Someone else, uh, wouldn't know where to find that.
We could, we can make sure it shows up on the, uh, Notice of Decision.
Okay, on the decision, that would be good.
Yeah, we'll just put it in there and make note of it so that it'll be on the record.
Rather than just be on correspondence.
Yeah. We're okay. I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
Finding anything they have. They say, there's other than four B two.
Yeah, they already said there's no outside work happening, so.
Yeah.
There isn't.
Okay, so let me close the public hearing. It's seven eleven. And now the board can discuss it. I'm not sure there's anything else we need to discuss, but.
I would agree.
Is that, is there anything else you're aware of, Jamel?
Um, there's several conditions of approval, um, on the Notice of Decision, so I guess I would suggest the board look at that, um, and. If you're comfortable with those conditions, then you can move on to that part of the evening.
Do we have the Notice of Decision?
It was sent to town staff. I'm not sure if it was included in your packets or not.
Yes.
Yeah.
When did you, when did you give it to her?
Yeah.
It's what, for last week.
I, I got it.
And the death line.
Okay.
Okay.
This, this one here.
Thank you.
That was, that was included in the planning board packets.
Yeah.
The stuff that you submitted.
Yeah, we, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that this?
Comments. Correct, yeah.
So do you have this?
That's what I'm looking for now.
Okay, well, here, you can share it with me. It's just all the things we discussed and why the waivers were granted.
Yeah. I remember, I remember seeing that.
The small one, yeah. Yeah.
And I. So there was, I thought with you, it's, I find the driver, they came down.
Do you have that in there too?
Oh, I've got to have this.
Yeah.
It's probably. No.
Yeah.
That should be out in my briefcase. It's not something I need to read.
Okay, I didn't think so, but just in case. So.
Okay. Any other questions for the board? Okay.
Does the board have the decision, Notice of Decision that was drafted?
Right.
I would look at page, um, four. Um, there's quite a few plan edits that are. Part of those conditions. Um, so those will just be dealt with offline with, uh, the planning department, if the board's comfortable with. The, uh.
Okay.
Seven to eight subconditions. I think it's very reasonable for the planner to check those for compliance.
Yeah, we have four, five, seven. I think before we. Sign these, we're going to have to get. A number of them here into the office. Okay. Let me tell you what we're looking at. All right, so.
Can we go down further?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm just going to start on page three with the conditions of approval, because that's where most of the. Most of the stuff that we're looking for has, we've already addressed the issue of ways that we're being asked for. But this, more than anything, this is just so that we can let the applicant know what all of these items are, because some of them we don't have. And we're going to need to get them before we can sign the plans. We determined that.
Some of those items will apply, right?
No, this is the Notice of Decision.
I understand that, but like, if you look through this, okay, so the comp we have zoning on the map plan, yeah, that's got to be on the plan, I get.
Yeah.
Elevations of the roof pitch to ensure it meets the standards. We're not doing anything to the building.
Well. Yeah, and that, I, what is, do you know what the pitch of the roof is?
We expected them to go.
And he said it, he measured it on a scale.
Yeah.
He said it's seven and a half. You know, and he said it may be yes. I'm terrified it's not.
That's looking at it. It looks like seven.
So for regret for that, I mean, it's great just a structure.
Yeah.
Let's say it was a seven, five. I mean, is that wrong? Look really going to make us. Breaking the trust of law?
No, because it's, it's an existing building.
Can I speak to that?
We would not.
Can I speak through the chair? Um, when a project comes in for site plan review, all standards are applicable to the project. So the idea is that it brings the site up to compliance. So that's why these conditions or comments are still in the project. Because even though you're not doing anything to the building. The board needs to make sure that it meets the town standards.
Means for thinking, bring a program in town, given that it's an existing structure that we're not changing the exterior of.
Not that I know of.
But the expectation from a town is that buildings are renovated for parents' homes only. Even though we're trying to actually transition our business into that space.
Yeah, the planning board doesn't really review the inside of a structure. It's all about the aesthetics on the outside. And when a project comes in, it's required to meet all of the applicable standards.
Well, I, I think that as far as the roof pitch goes, I, I think it's, it's immaterial because. It, to me, it looks like it already is seven twelve.
And I'm sure it does. We just, it's, the applicant needs to provide evidence.
Well.
Which one?
Your architect looked at it, maybe. If he could just, it'd just be added it.
I'm not an architect, so I, I'm not going to measure it for them. Um, but if they want to provide that measurement, then that, that would meet the, the standard.
So this came in at a seven.
That would be fine. It's seven over twelve, so. Not seven and a half, it, it, that's, um, every foot, every twelve inch divided seven, yeah, um.
Right, I thought it was seven and a half.
Yeah, it looks like it, but it's seven over twelve. So I think if it's, if it's seven and a half, you, you're more than covered. That's steeper.
Right, it's a nasty seven, so I guess.
If it came in at five, we'd have them rip the roof off?
Right, I guess that's.
I would not want to even hear it.
That makes zero sense.
That, that's crazy.
But that.
I get it if you're building a new place, but if you're moving into an existing building that you're not. On the outside. We've never had anybody rip a roof off.
No, we haven't.
Or go change the windows or go change any of that. If that's the case, when they do go make modifications. You have to go to the code enforcement officer and make sure that they meet the requirements of the town.
And that, well, that's what I was going to say. We, we're going to go through. We're going to go through and we're going to look at the project and we're going to approve the use the way it is. If the building does not come up to code. That's going to be the codes enforcement officer that is going to tell you that you have to fix it.
Any changes are made at that point, then they would go ahead and have to meet the requirements of what, what's laid out in there, but something that's existing. Luckily, it makes zero sense to me that we're going to go say, tear the roof off and change it.
I, I would agree with that.
But the applicant has to meet the standards. I, we talked to the town attorney. They're not able to waive standards unless it's stated in the ordinance, so. Based on the legal advice. It's my responsibility to make sure the project meets the standards.
So that gives us a heads up going forward that this is an ordinance that needs modification.
Yeah, we need to look at that.
So, which has nothing to do with this evening.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Let's see.
So I think you.
Just have your architect confirms what the pitch of the roof is.
So, yeah, more than anything, they just, we just need confirmation.
How did it plan?
The way that ordinance currently written, for the fixed lines to clarify, was the front facing proportion of that building. Because we'd been told that it's expected them to get. Add windows to that front facing wall, simply for aesthetic purposes only, not needed for the actual use of that building. To meet this current ordinance. So is that something that they're going to have to do? It spent thousands of dollars so that people driving by are happy with the building view when they see on Route One. But all we're trying to do is fix people's cars in our community. And the building as is, it's been proven, it's been standing there for however long it's been, it has been built. So that was a good question to come up with.
Let's see, I would, I would say if this were a change of use, like we're looking at a place right now that is changing its use. And they're going to have to conform to the zone. This is, this is currently an automobile repair shop, and it's not changing. The use is going to be the same, so.
But what Jamel just said is that when you have a review like this, that the, even though they're not changing the structure. They still have to be in compliance in terms with the ordinance. So we have to change the ordinance and put some wiggle room in there for these kinds of things, but.
I, I will note that the fenestration requirements are a zoning requirement, and that's just not a waivable requirement. And they, you've showed us that you meet that requirement in your, in your work. It's twenty-five percent, says window and door area shall not be less than twenty-five percent, no more than sixty-six percent of the facade area facing the street or public sidewalk. Yes.
The reality is, again, that costs thousands of dollars simply for a visual aesthetic, not, not insisting the whole purpose of using that building. It's really just for the aesthetic of what you see on Route One. So that's what we submitted from one, they come here today and ask about that in clarity because. It's a big huge expense because of how that ordinance was changed, and I think. If you have other people that are trying to come into that portion of town, and they have old buildings that are trying to rehab and have to be better for our community. And you're going to drop them, renovate and act, change the roofs, add windows, do all these things. Simply for aesthetic purposes, and I think it's a huge barrier you're going to find for residents who are trying to have businesses in that part of town. It's a huge financial expense.
What section is that, Jamel?
It's section six point four point four, design standards for new construction and rehabilitation. I would consider this project a rehabilitation of the structure. And it sounds like the, uh, town included these design standards, so. Structures and buildings would meet certain architectural criteria.
The. The planning board did. Back when we created DB one and DB two. And, and rezone certain sections, we did put in design standards for the buildings because we didn't want. Tin sheds showing up. So we, we did, uh. Put in design standards in terms of what the buildings are supposed to look like. Six point four point. Well, I'm, I don't, I don't. I don't think it's rehab. Because you're moving into an existing facility. And you're doing the same kind of, of business. We would have to determine. What we, it's not new construction, so the question becomes, what is rehab?
Is that clearly defined in the ordinance?
Well.
I'm looking to find out.
The term rehab isn't even there. It's, I'll read it. All, all proposed structural renovations, modifications, or new construction proposed within downtown business, business hills. They'll conform those.
Right, so if, if they were modifying the front of the building or the roof of the building. Then they would have to conform with these requirements.
Especially, I think.
But if they're modifying the internal walls of the building, then it doesn't apply.
Right, but they're talking about the windows on the outside of the building.
Right.
Which they're not doing unless we force them to do.
We have the impression that we tried to. Have additional windows. That's why they're immediately submitted, but we don't want to do that. Because again, it's simply a huge additional expense for really no reason. There's no benefit to our, to the business.
So.
If you follow the reason, you could get into that painting wall. The other reason I would have to get in.
Yes, otherwise you just leave it, there's nobody.
So if they came in and said, we're going to modify the storefront of this, okay? And we're going to plywood it all and put, uh, TV screens and a neon sign. We'd say, eh, not happening. You're going to modify the front of that building, you need to meet this requirement.
Yeah.
Correct.
Especially if you're not modifying the front of that building. Or you're not modifying the roof, you're not raising it. Okay, you're not putting dormers. Why would you even think you're falling under that requirement? It doesn't make sense to me.
Are they renovating the building?
They are renovating the inside.
Inside.
Wait, and I think a key word here, a phrase, is. It all proposed structural renovations, modifications, so that you're not doing anything structural except for the interior.
Discretion of the board. That's a board decision.
Yep. So.
Yeah, I, I would say no.
I mean, I get it. I don't want the front of the place to look like a clamshell, okay? But if it's not being changed and it's been like that for the last body years, why would we go force them to change that? It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, so that's the problem with the ordinance.
Yeah.
Because it's vague and it doesn't leave any discretionary decision making.
I would, I would say that it is not vague. All proposed structural renovations. There are no proposed renovations, and it is not new construction. So I, I don't think it's big, big at all. I, I would tend to come down and say, no, they.
So you're good. On the record, you'd say that they're not modifying the building?
On the outside.
On the front of that building or the roof? No.
Okay.
Structurally.
It's renovations inside the building.
Then when Tom wrote the definition of rehabilitation, it doesn't sound like you fall into that.
It, no.
Which would then negate that whole six point four dot four.
Right. Correct.
The whole thing.
Yeah, it would not apply.
But going forward, we should clarify that.
Yeah, that.
So we don't have to have this discussion again.
If you guys think we need to clarify it, we can clarify it. Not a problem.
Yeah, we'll have to come back and revisit that.
Are there to be any areas trying to decide to be?
There, there will be for anybody who wants to put in new construction. If you're going to build, you're going to build through the standards. Yeah, if you're going to. If you were converting this from something other than an automobile garage, yeah, you probably would be asked to do the. Yeah, because you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Without that.
But. But in this case, no, I don't think it, I don't think it's required.
Can I ask a question of, what, what's the front of the, the street facing side look like? Any windows at all?
There's five among probably two upstairs and a mezzanine and then three downstairs.
No doors on that end? Is there a doorway? Okay.
Building on the upper left-hand side, there was a sign up on that building. It's not there anymore. We put one in that space.
You, you'd fall, you'd fall up against it. Well, you'd run, you'd run up against the sign ordinance, which would. You know, the codes enforcement officer would let you know about it.
Okay.
So I would.
Yeah.
I would say that we, we need a motion. To waive six point four four, because it doesn't apply. Well, I guess not. If it doesn't apply, we don't need to have a motion.
No.
Yeah.
Not valid.
Jamel said it's within the purview of the. Of the board to make this decision, since these other conditions exist.
But I want to make sure that the decision is on the record, that we are allowing it.
Right. And that's why I just said it's within the purview.
Well, it will be when we sign them.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
If that's the case, then condition five B would, would be eliminated.
Would be eliminated first.
Right.
Okay.
All right, moving right along here. Where are we?
C.
Uh, the photometric plan? Okay.
And it's, it's actually super tough to see, but, uh. Um, I know Jamel had mentioned that. It didn't shed, it shed more than point five foot candles, but on the lighting plan, it does explode and show where you can see that. There was, we had submitted, I don't forget the call, but we had submitted a second one, if I get you that wrong one.
Right, yeah.
So I gave you the other one, but I was in contact with the LED lighting expert, the Scott Saul, I think his name was. And there's one sheet that, it's got red letters, and when you zoom in, it, it, uh, it's sort of, whatever they call it. Uh, and it shows all the foot candles all the way up through property line, and. It's a point five or a lack of. Or whatever.
Okay.
But it's super tough. It's on, it has little red letters on, and on a computer, you can zoom in.
Yeah.
Exactly. Through the chair.
Tried zooming in.
The photometrics plan does not go up to the property line, so we couldn't make the measurement. It's cut off on the plan. The entire property is not depicted on the plan, so we couldn't make the measurement at the property line.
Well, in this property line. The only place we have any lights is on. Is on the building on this southern east side, basically, that's all that.
Okay, no.
That's the only place there's any exterior lights. And it shows the property line on that side, which is going, and, and at the rear of the building, the light kind of plucks back to the rear a little bit. But it does show the line on. Yeah.
It just doesn't show the lot, the measurement where it matters. Because that property line is a single-family residential structure, and there's a requirement for certain foot candles along that property line, but we can't measure it because the line is cut off from the plan. So we were unable, it might meet it, but we were unable to determine if it met the standard.
Uh, so you're saying a little corner?
Yep.
Yeah, I think on the digital copy, I didn't realize that was cut off. On the digital copy, you can see it's there.
If you, if you could provide us with the digital copy, so that.
Stand on it, for now.
Hold on. Yeah, send, send it to Ann.
Yeah, I didn't know if mine's, I guess it is.
That way we'll have it in the file if anybody wants to look at it. Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, Jamel, in five?
Um, there's, it goes A through H. So we're comfortable with the conditions. We think that they're easily fixed or modified for the applicant, but if the board wants to discuss them, happy to. And I'm making edits as we go, and I'll send Ann an updated version that you can sign at a later date.
Providing a plan note on the site plan describing how the proposal meets the standards. That's gone. Uh, documentation indicating the required ten-foot wide lands, landscape strip along the southern and northern property lines.
Which one do you want?
I'm looking at G. Uh, because he's got to have a, he's got to have a ten-foot wide landscape strip. And it should be on the plan.
But that's existing buffers.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it.
So just mark it as you show it.
Yeah, just mark it on the plan.
As existing buffer. Yeah.
Yeah.
Have him show it and say this is, no, and just say this is the existing buffer, and it either meets or exceeds the ten-foot requirement. Just have him call it out on the plan. So if there's no question. Yeah.
Just, just abandon drawing with your statement.
The note.
And the existing buffer.
Yeah. Both the front, front and back, so. Putting those.
The buffer, well, it's all.
Well, okay, I'm thinking, okay, put neighbors out on, on the other side, yeah, yeah.
I don't see.
You'll, you'll get this document via email, so you'll have it all. Once it's, uh, yeah.
I don't see a parking plan anywhere. What am I missing?
Yeah, we had one.
Started with all.
Detail parking may, yeah, yeah.
I know where that one's at.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all, that, that, that's.
You need a cup?
No, no, I, I recognize it, I just don't have it here.
Yeah, we discussed that.
That's on, uh, yeah.
On the first page.
Unfortunately, the other place that we discussed that is.
Site plan. That would be, I talked about there. So maybe we should have a note stating that no new pavement or previous cover is proposed. To add a note to, so we know it's remaining. As is. You're not planning on, on extending the parking lot or anything.
Yeah, and there's nowhere to, it's only one acre piece.
Yes.
Yeah. And, and no plans until now, so to pave or go that far, we're going to get the inside operational and, you know, everybody decides to pay later and then.
I think that has that in the original application.
Right.
Yeah. And we repaved, we did, we just repaved, let's say.
Exactly, in the same.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but as of right now, there is no nothing.
Okay, good.
It's, yeah, it's not on the top list, that's for sure.
So, did you have your architect add that as a note that the paved area to remain, as is?
So are you removing the condition for the parking matrix?
Well, they, they, not removing, they, they, there is a fairly detailed layout of, of what's existing.
Okay.
They're not changing it, I think that'll suffice.
Got it.
Then. I don't remember, did we did we waive the right, the, the property boundary? The survey?
You recommended that into a.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's, yeah.
You guys will apply, you just have to have.
Yeah.
But you were going to check with the county to see whether or not it's an existing plan. And there's nothing.
I didn't involve the living in the use of the last one, the survey in I think it was oh one, and their records don't go back that far. Then I did some more digging down, Floman Saco did it in eighteen eighty. And I never followed back up with that, I thought it was briefly, and so was the problem against that happening, eventually I just haven't, but I don't, I right, and there's actually, I think on three corners, two or three, there's big granite posts that are existing on the properties. Those are pretty top drive, and I think on the northern side of the building, kind of backside of the building, there's just states in the ground. So the Alzey knows where they are, he should, yeah, he should be, you know, from afar. It's kind of laid out, that'll have the survey map.
Okay. The chair. Yeah, Paul.
Yeah.
At the November nineteenth meeting, we did waive, uh, let's see, we waived seven waivers for location, layout, and dimension of drainage facilities, onsite soil survey, site survey for improvement, planning schedule, planning details, uh, site distance, and detailed cost estimates.
Right, yeah, that's, we have that listed in, in the notice of decision.
So is the board requiring a, a survey, or is that a recommendation? Just so I can update the conditions accordingly.
So, and then we, we just recommended it, it's inside.
So it's not a requirement?
League, officially, it was waived.
Okay. I'll take that out.
You know, you could probably back into it by looking at the surveys of your neighbor, which would define what, what your survey, what your property.
Yeah.
Just go backwards.
Yeah.
According to your own borders. Yeah, it's, I understand, I'm saying.
Because no, not required, but it's for my own, for our home, yeah.
Yeah, there is, there is, there is an item on here, and I'm sure that there's one in existence someplace, an approved MDOT driveway entrance permit. There must be one floating.
I actually spoke with them, there should be a letter from your parents.
There's a letter, right.
They, they had some questions remaining about some stuff, so I thought that they would answer those, and then you'd get a permit. They didn't sign off on it.
Oh, I know, that was what the DOT did, to just say everything's fine.
They had two questions in their in their letter that they wanted the applicants to address, so I just thought it was a a condition that could be dealt with at a later date. Based on the regional engineer's review.
And do we have a, a letter from me, Andrew, the fire chief?
Oh. The, the Dixie spray paint marks, that was one of the questions.
Right.
Was when Al Lindsay, we were kind of discussing doing the leach field, so he had called Dixie, because he was potentially going to do a full practice of building, and then that kind of slipped along. So those Dixie marks are because of that, and I did, I looked at him on the phone, and he didn't let me know that, yeah, the, the setback, if you will, on the side of the road, I think had to be third. I don't remember what, it was a pretty short distance. And the leach fields that we're going to be doing, it's going to be like way nowhere to be here. I don't know if the aftermath is going to be looking at their proposal. Uh, I know will have to be that, I don't have the definite leach field of separate system plan officially yet, but based on the preliminary stuff that happened, spoken with a guy named Jared Boles, designer of the Bronwood area. Uh, it was if I had thrown a hundred, probably seventy-five feet, so I would, and I want to say that was like a thirteen feet off, twenty-five feet off the sound, or like thirteen feet from that, or something, like thirty-eight feet, didn't remember that. But.
Right, there's plenty of space.
Yeah.
Before you even get to that, or the property, we're there.
And worst case scenario, if the stuff that can't go there, there's already another tentative plan to go back on. So regardless, I could explain.
Yep.
So, so bottom line is, is they bought off on the grand, as they said, the entrance is grandfathered, but by the time you do the leach field, you'll have to get permits and stuff, and those will.
That's on, yeah, it's all. Uh, but as of now, I don't have a definite, my, my intent is to put a, you know, leach field, separate system, then you put a whole thing, so they, but and not this, at this point, nothing, so, and it's a little comply upfront, and I'll have sort of the response on property, that's all.
What was your question about the fire chief?
Right, have you gotten a letter from Andrew, the fire chief?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that was emailed over.
Did we?
And Terry.
And, and from Terry, okay.
Yeah, that's from Terry, well, yeah.
Was it, was Andrew his usual, uh, verbose individual and just? I'm, I'm holding.
He had the normal requirements for a structure.
Well, when he, when Andrew first started off, he would just, he'd give us a letter. Yep, they meet, they, it does what I want him to do. Be really nice to know what that was.
Wanted to, yeah, he had mentioned uh, that when.
Knock box.
Yeah, we need knock box.
Right.
Oh, the, yeah, the fire alarm, and he said that may or may not apply. The fire alarm things, he said that would have to be discussed when it gets closer. You know, because of giving the bad surprise, and I can't sprint to the system, the garage, and take a shower every day in the garage, so, you know. But an alarm system, he had talked about to alert them, and like, that seems like a fine decision, whether whether I want to do it or not, it seems like a good idea. So that was his advice, and the knock box as well, same.
Yeah.
So should we move along?
No, I think, I think at this point, we need to get the plans. Uh, and we need to, we need to modify the, uh, conditions of approval, because some of these can come out, there's no reason for us to, to go through and leave them in. So we'll get, get those adjusted.
So we don't want to do the findings of fact tonight?
Not, we.
We do it with condition.
Why not?
Be, because a lot of the stuff that is in here, in, in the conditions of approval.
Yeah.
Don't need to be in here.
I've been, uh, going through and deleting things, so I'm happy to, to speak to them, um, if if the chair wishes for that, when we get to that point of the decision.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if we can do it, we should do it.
Well, if we can, yes, but I didn't.
I just don't think the board will be able to sign it tonight.
No, they'd sign it tonight, but then there's a couple things, you're going to add to the plan, right, but I think we can move along.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Right. Right, under your idea, and you check with Donald Zico. Because originally that whole property, which is your butter neighbor, where you are, and where Gunther is, SL Tech, that was all one piece property.
I, I read that, yeah, I did see.
And that was with Donald and Co., because it was due Mr. Smith father.
Got you.
Because like I said, uh, SL Tech there was originally built in such a way, because there was a part of the property, or something on their corner of it, was in discussion about property lines, because that building was originally built for an airplane there. So how that's how far back that goes.
Yeah.
In itself.
Yeah, so, and I'll follow up and, you know, with that anyway, but like I said, I'll probably end up doing my survey in the, in probably relative to near future, just so I really know where, think why I'm at property.
But also too, you can check with, uh, uh, Pimberidge, who were building up the road on Route One, because he was in there before Gunther was.
Oh.
So he may even have a survey map or somewhere along the way, so if you want to check.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, because that's Mr. Kraus.
Could be known. Yeah. Okay. Sounds like a plan.
Okay. We need a motion. And a second. Only if you want me to read all the notes.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should do it.
We bring them first, then.
We normally take it first, and then when we, when we get to the end.
So that'd be the discussion. Well, I'll move that, uh, we approve.
Yeah.
I mean, what, how should I word that?
Uh, we approved the.
The, the application?
The application.
Yeah, okay, I'll leave it there.
Second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to approve the application. Findings of fact and conclusions of law, site plan review for the expansion of an existing automobile repair garage, thirteen seventy Portland Road. The applicant submitted a site plan review application to the planning board on November third, two thousand twenty-four. The proposal included an expansion of an existing automobile repair garage, which is a legally existing business according to town records. The proposal also includes associated utilities, off-street parking, lighting, and other elements. The proposal is located at thirteen seventy Portland Road, assessors tax map thirty-four lot five A one. The property is located in the downtown business one, DB one zoning district. The planning board reviewed the project on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and held a public hearing on December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. The planning board determined that a sidewalk was not necessary for the proposal. Findings of fact, applicant Tabitha and Craig Barden, owner Albert Lindsay. Location thirteen seventy Portland Road, assessors tax map thirty-four lot five A one. Zoning is downtown business one, DB one. Existing land use is automobile repair garage, with opposed land use is automobile repair yard. Acreage is one acre. Uh, other, associated off-street parking spaces, utilities, and lighting. Inclusions of law. The planning board has determined that the application to, to be in conformance with the criteria set forth in section ten point six point four in the land use ordinance as follows. The proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. The proposed project conforms to all applicable zoning and performance standards. Number two, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits.
If I could jump in right here, um, the project does not require a main DOT entrance permit, so I'll update the um, conclusions accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Number three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection, and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. The proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety, fire protection, and emergency services. Number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. The proposed project does not impact the quality of surface or groundwater resources. Number five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five-year storm event, and will not have an undue impact on the municipal. And will not have an undue impact on the municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. Given that the project only includes the renovation of the existing structure on the property and no associated site work, no additional stormwater management facilities are required. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems. Within the community or neighborhood. No impacts to existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems are anticipated. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact on environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, habitats. Marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments, or the community. No impacts to environmental quality, critical wildlife habits, marine resources, important cultural resources. Or visual quality of the neighborhoods, surrounding environments, or the community are anticipated. Number eight, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances. That will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. None of the above nuisances are anticipated. Number nine, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government. No negative fiscal impact on municipal government is anticipated. Number ten, that the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood. The proposes, the proposal, the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The planning board granted the following waivers. Land use ordinance, section ten point five point two, plenary site plan review application requirements. Existing and proposed drainage facilities and stormwater calculations, onsite soils information, site data entry, site distances. Planting schedule and planting details and detailed cost estimates. Conditions of approval, based on the above findings of fact and conditions of. Law, the Arundel Planning Board approves the site plan review application of Tabitha and Craig Barden to operate. And legally, a. To operate, expand, to operate a legally existing automobile repair garage. As herein presented contingent upon the following conditions. The planning board determined that the proposed expansion of the legally existing automobile repair garage on the site. Is a permitted use on the property in accordance with section six point four point one point three in the land use ordinance. Number two, any modification from the approved plan shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board. Number three, in accordance with section ten point seven of the land use ordinance. The applicant shall submit a performance guarantee acceptable to the planning board. Pr- prior to the commencement of any site activity associated with this project. The performance guarantee shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number four, in accordance with section ten point nine of the land use ordinance. All legal rights, privileges, and duties thereof shall expire if the project construction has not commenced within one year of the approval date. And if the project is not substantially completed within two years of the approval date. The planning board may grant the one-year extension. On conditional use review approvals. If compelling evidence is presented that the additional time is required to meet federal, state, or local permit requirements, or in reaction to market changes. Number five, prior to signing of the final plan, the applicant shall submit the following. A, a comprehensive zoning matrix on the site plan. Including the zoning requirements that set forth in section six point four point three in the land use ordinance. And the proposed conditions on the site.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Uh do you want me to do the rest of them, since I was editing? Uh B would be a photometrics plan that includes the foot candle measurements along the entire and western property line. To ensure the proposed lighting meets the standard set forth in section six point four point seven point two. In the land use ordinance. The color rendering index, C R I, for the proposed light fixtures to ensure they meet the standard set forth in six, section six point four point seven point five in the land use ordinance. Depicts the required street trees on the site plan to ensure they meet the standard set forth. In section six point four point eight point two in the land use ordinance. Provide a plan note on the site plan describing how the proposal meets the san- standard set forth in section six point four point eight point four in the land use ordinance. F, provide documentation on the plans indicating that the required ten-foot-wide landscape strip. Landscape strip along the southern and northern property lines meets the standard set forth of section six point four point eight point five in the land use ordinance. G, provide a plan note in the site plan indicating that the lights on the site will include timers, dimmers, and our sensors to eliminate unne- unneeded lighting on the site. The plan notes should also include the anticipated timing associated with the dimming of the light fixtures on the site. H, provide a plan note in the site plan indicating that no new pavement. Slash impervious cover is proposed. On the site as part of the project. And then six, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall. Complete the requirements set forth by the fire department. Thank you.
Right, thank you. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this date, December tenth, two thousand twenty four.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Marty Kane, seconded by Susan Roth to approve the notice of decision. As modified. Any discussion?
There was. One. Minor thing that I think is worth. Scratch on page three. Under the conditions of approval. The second line said to operate. And the word expand, I think should be scratched.
Uh you're right, sir. Cause I know I skipped over it, I was struggling with trying to read.
Make sure they're not expanding.
There we go, change burden tomorrow.
It's to operate a legally existing automobile repair.
The, and the name is, is misspelled.
Yeah, it's pardon, not burden.
Sorry about that.
No, 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 that's. That's your wife.
Not intentional.
Yeah, not burden tonight.
Alright. Okay. All those, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations. Once, once you get the plans. We'll be able to sign them, we'll get, we'll get these corrected and modified, and we'll make sure that you get a copy of it as well.
Okay.
I'm gonna email it back and.
Yeah.
With the plan, all of all of.
Yes.
I'm gonna email it to you right now.
Yeah. Thank you.
You got it. You're welcome.
Sorry, we're.
I thought you were a burden.
Well, one intention though.
So you know that this is Jamel's last meeting?
Yes.
And uh the town has hired a. A full-time?
No, she's not, she's not full-time.
Well, a, a part-time. Uh planner. So Jamel will no longer be here, so you'll be communicating with somebody else.
Six months. Yeah, we're here, um we're a regional planning agency, so we have thirty-nine communities that we serve. Um so we're happy that Arundel has uh. Gotten someone with more hours, um so I think it'll serve the town well.
Yeah, we'll.
You got it.
Have someone that will be in-house. At least one day a week. Yeah, we'll run the, on the other end, in the planning office.
And Ann will know.
And Ann will know the hours and be able to work it out. There's none, we, we need to have that with. Within a year.
Yeah, so I think.
Yeah, this, the, the only, the only timeframe you're up against is the fact that.
If you're going on, bro. Yeah.
You've got a year from the point that it was approved, it's been approved, you have a year.
You can't, you can't sign the plan.
Right.
Right, you have to get the rest of the stuff, so we can sign.
You can get all of the paperwork signed off on before we can pull the permits, be able to start doing.
And you gotta add those little things, like the notes.
Make the notes on the plan and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All that.
Yeah.
We'll get that turnaround as soon as we can, submit it to Ann, who's doing it.
Yes. Give it to Ann, and she'll do like she did tonight, we have a set of plans here. For somebody else that. You'll need a couple of full-size sets. And.
We're gonna need one.
Yeah.
It'll look like something like that with a signature block on it.
Yeah.
We're signing blocks on it.
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll be able, because the. Original plan, which Pam has on file. Has obviously been amended by the same architect as he made the original plan. We have an amen that gave a wall, put all the windows, so we'll just have them kind of blend.
Yeah.
Yeah. The two together, because we're gonna be able, because that gable wall is not changing at all.
So you can just do a copy.
We'll have to take it out, we'll pretty much take the one that's on file, put it in another set of plans, without all the windows in it. And I'll have the envelope.
Okay.
Good job.
Appreciate it.
Hey.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Merry Christmas.
Okay.
We have a year to get it done, I've been scrambling.
Well, it's.
Happy hour.
You, you do have a year to get it done, but if you take that entire year, then you're gonna run out of time. And have to get an extension.
Right, well.
Please don't do that.
Yeah, no.
Frank, if you need any spots or ideas. Come see me.
Appreciate it.
Good night, guys.
Merry Christmas.
You too.
Okay, the next. The next item that we have to look at. Is a board vote to schedule a public hearing for Bentley's. For the campground.
So what's that, like uh every five years?
I believe it was every three years originally, or whenever he finished up one of the phases, but he now wants to change. Um. Some of the stuff he's. We've, we've looked at, at uh some of the plans and things that he wants to do, we need to schedule a public hearing.
Right, we did a sidewalk.
Yeah, we did a sidewalk. But the next step is going to be the public hearing, and then we can move forward from there, either, either. Granted to him or not granted to him. Cause he, he did change quite a bit from what he was doing, because he's, he's consolidated one of the phases. In terms of what he was doing.
Well, I thought we already approved it.
No, we haven't. Cause he's, he's never given us the plans.
Okay.
Yeah, we did the sidewalk.
Yeah, but we never got the plans, like you said.
Right.
I mean, uh, we had a, a copy of what. The old plans were, but never. Amended new plan.
Correct.
Right.
Now, the next question is also. Do we want to do it? Cause he's not in town. The only one who might be around is Rick. Or we, and.
Rick's going to do it, Rick is the one who suggested that we delay it to January.
Are we gonna do it January seven?
January seventh. And we will notify them that we're holding the public hearing. And they should have the plans and everything else at that point to bring to us.
And they have to be here, somebody has to be here.
Has to be here. And we, we know it won't.
We hold the uh public hearing for Bentley's Campground Conditional Use Renewal on January seventh.
Is that enough time for them to have? The plans?
This is, this was their suggestion that we put it off that far. Cause we offered it to them here in December, and they said, no, 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 push it out. So we said January seventh, and that Rick was fine with it.
Okay, I'm just.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for, to do the public hearing.
Yeah, Tom.
Second.
Okay.
I'll second it.
No, no, it's already been seconded, Tom did. Paul made the motion, Tom seconded, any discussion?
No.
Hearing that.
Weather permitting.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Weather permitting.
Our meeting's always a poke.
No, we've had. Weather.
Okay, so all of, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous.
And if they're not ready, we'll just.
If, if they're not ready.
Table it on the agenda, that's.
That's right.
Okay. Did you want to take this back up now?
Did I want to?
Yeah, your, your motion was to table it till the end of the meeting.
About that. Yes. Um.
Those are the minutes of December third, I believe.
Yeah, December third, the workshop.
Uh I'm gonna abstain, because I wasn't here.
So what I tried to do, guys, was I just captured the discussions we had.
Yeah.
Was based on. The minutes from the original meeting. So the only thing I did was, um. Actually, you know what? We got it, you got, so let me bring it back to the next meeting, take a look at it and give me comments, because the first one. Oh, okay, the first one's actually good, so, yeah.
You, you're not including the new language yet.
I didn't know, what I did was I assigned actions. Out of this, based on who committed to go do what at that meeting.
Yeah.
This is just the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, I was.
Okay, the actions, in fact, I just got a uh Microsoft Word copy of the land use ordinance, and I'm starting to work on it now.
Yeah.
As I get those done. I'll submit them so we can review them at one of our future meetings.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Good.
Not, I'm not, I'm not proposing the words here for.
That's why I was afraid, which is more important.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Words are gonna have, I mean, I'm gonna take a shot at doing the graph. Yeah, okay, and send it, and I'm sure they're gonna get word Smith and all that, and I'm sure even the fire chief will have some to give.
Yeah.
So this is just the minutes of the meeting, the stuff we discussed.
Okay.
Who took an action to go do something.
Great.
Basically, I took. All of them to go draft something, so you guys. Take chops on it.
Good.
And I think, and I think our esteemed chairman here has a couple actions on it as too, so.
I do, and I'm looking for him, and I don't see him on here.
Uh. Let's see. If you look, uh the first one uh says, Mr. Green.
Oh, there it is, I found it.
And.
I'm gonna perform a word search.
Word search.
Yep.
Right.
Right, just to make sure that there, we've got all the, the, the.
That we get them all.
Yeah, because we're taking the word linear, getting out and just replacing it.
And then you have one on number three. Which was to discuss with the town manager and the town counselor. I may have quoted that wrong.
No, no.
She's the town council.
Equality of the. Uh viability of sys- the systems, and if they damaged it and all that stuff, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Because if the town, for example, fire chief knows there's a system out there that's empty.
Yeah.
And there happens to be a fire in that neighborhood.
They know about it.
What are we doing? And if they do know it's empty, then who's responsible to fix it? That's what we gotta try and figure out.
At this point, I believe that that would probably be the fire chief, because that's been the condition all along. You know. The question becomes, do we want to continue doing that?
That, that's all up for discussion, it's like, far as I know, I will move that we prove as written.
They have a motion to approve the minutes of December third, is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion by Mart, uh motion by Tom, seconded by Marty to approve the minutes of December third as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?